Evening, everyone. Welcome to this evening's council meeting. City of Anamosa City Council Agenda Regular Session, Monday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, six P M. Anamosa Library Learning Center, one point zero roll call.
From?
Here.
It's Ben.
Here.
Here.
Dan Smith?
Here.
Four members are present in chambers with no council members remote. Two point zero pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three point zero consent agenda reviewed and approved. There are five items listed. I will read, excuse me, there are four items listed. I will read all four off. Council can make a motion that includes consent, which will bring all four up for discussion in the single vote. Otherwise, councils can itemize any of the agenda items. Item A, minutes from June ninth, twenty twenty-five, special joint session. Item B, minutes from June tenth, twenty twenty-five, regular session. Item C, current bills. Item D, cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, vapor permits.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council, all four open.
Hey, Steve, I did have this credit under the water fund. What is that exactly? For eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars? So we got bad numbers from Madison. We thought we needed more smart points. We ordered them, got them in. We got down, realized that we had several boxes that we wasn't going to need, so we turned them back in. So.
That's the water meters?
That's the box on the side of the house that talks to the water meter that talks to this, everything, so. So you kept six thousand dollars worth up here in the next line item on the next page? No, we had to order some different ones. The ones that we bought were to replace the old ones, but the newer meters take a little different smart point. It's a three wire versus a two wire.
Questions? Four and then items?
Yeah, I'm wondering why we have a Mingar mowing and landscaping bill from for the police department. I thought that our city employees did the mowing for all of the things.
Chief, you can pipe in on this one. It probably was a nuisance.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So when we have a nuisance, we call Mingers or Pearson's or some other lawn service. And then the bill comes to the police department. We pay that out of our nuisance budget. And then we send it into City Hall. So there's a administrative fee that's supposed to go on top of that.
Thank you. I'd forgotten.
Question on the. There was a fourteen hundred dollar bill from Mingers for spraying at wastewater treatment. Is that because there were certifications that were required that our city staff doesn't have?
Correct. We do not have applicator's license to buy spray and spray, so. And we don't also don't have the equipment to do it all over the rocks on the sides of the hills.
Thank you. That's all.
Anything else? Any public comment on the items? Can we leave Dr. Roll vote, please?
Hey, Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Motion approved, approved consent and the areas. Four point zero, public hearings, none. Five point zero proclamations, none. Six point zero postponed items unfinished business. Six point one, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five. Resolution authorizing and approving a loan and disbursement agreement and writing for the issuance and securing the payment of three million one hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. Sewer revenue bond, series twenty twenty-five.
So this is a continuation of the last council meeting. At that meeting, there was just a brief discussion about the the bonds, whether they were callable. I'd recommended the possibility of approving that resolution contingent on finding that information out. I sent the council an email on what I had heard back from our financial advisors, Spear Financial, and our bond attorney, Dorsey and Whitney, provided the information. I can go over that again if you'd like, but essentially it said that they are not subject to call it being callable as a traditional loan or from a traditional loan sense. The S R F loans are specified in the state code, but they are redeemable and at no additional charges or fees, but they are required to, if we wanted to do that, we'd have to make written requests to Iowa Finance Authority to do it. And then Maggie followed up with that and said, after ten years, they're automatically redeemable. I I believed or took that 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 met the requirement for, I guess, what the council's intent was. I suggested that to the bond attorney. He did not see it that way. He felt that it was important to have this back on the agenda, clearly specifying whether or not we were good with proceeding with the S R F loan under the stipulations in the loan agreement. So this is just back again, same form as last time with that new information.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
By Rich, second by Dan. Council discussion. Public comment. Kaylee, please.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Jason? Yes.
Motion to approve carries. Seven point zero council action item, seven point one, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six. Setting salaries for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six for appointed officers and employees of the city of Anamosa, Iowa, and establishing an effective date for this resolution.
I'm going to approve. Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Rich. Council discussion. Public comment?
Blue? Dan Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion to approve carries. Seven point two, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven, authorizing an additional wage allocation for City Hall employees required to perform the essential duties of the vacant city clerk position.
This is a little different than we've done it in the past. I figured I would present this, and as I stated in my memo, I I know in the past, filling some essential positions, the council has been agreeable to provide a salary adjustment, a temporary salary adjustment for the employee performing those duties. In this case, with the city clerk's resignation, it's my belief that at City Hall, we've all kind of equally jumped in to fill those duties. We're just at the end of the fiscal year, so we do have some funds available from that resignation. And so this request or this this resolution is just a request to divide that among the three employees at City Hall. That's myself, Deputy City Clerk Kaylee, and Utility Billing Clerk Madison. This is a one-time payment from or allocation from that fund. And it totals the four thousand five hundred dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Kay, second by Rich. Council discussion.
So in a sense, you're looking at this as more of like a bonus than anything else. It's a one-time.
That's correct. Yeah, it was, again, I guess it was a little bit different this time. Normally, it's pretty cut and dry. If we just set a dollar amount or an additional amount to one person's salary, but since I feel that all three of us have been sustaining the workload, it wasn't going to be as cut and dry. So I just opted to try this a little different way.
And you said it was employee?
Yes, and so just, again, not not completely accurate, but we took roughly the amount that her wages would have been minus the period of time from her resignation to our, the employee agreed upon payout. Took it over the last four weeks-ish, and that was what we had left in the remaining fund for the fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five.
Comments? Are we actively seeking a new clerk?
We are. Yes, we're in the middle of that process right now.
Getting a lot of applicants?
Oh, no, a lot is, I guess, a strong term. It were. It's the current climate, I think, throughout the state and probably further. We're just, there's not a lot of available applicants.
Thank you.
Public comment? Kay?
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries. Seven point three, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-eight. Approving the appointment of the Library Board of Trustees to fill the term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Kay. Council discussion. Public comment? Kaylee?
Hey, Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Motion to approve carries. Seven point four, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-nine. To set the wage of a temporary full-time public utilities operator for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
This one is just due to the movement in the department. One temporary military leave and then the resignation or retirement of another created this vacancy. There was some internal movement to fill that, take the former temporary public utilities employee to a full-time position, which was no change in wages. And then we're just backfilling that existing position with this individual, Mr. Anderson.
Move to approve. We harmonized on that one, didn't we?
Rich had the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Kay. Second by Kay. Council discussion.
So how many total people you have now at the plant with this person, Steve?
We will have six.
So is there three at water, three at wastewater?
That's not the way we do it. You know, specifically.
Set three up there and set three down there. We work together as a group. We'll send one person up the hill to do the water stuff if he needs. If that individual needs help, we'll send another one. Otherwise, we'll do the other things, the work orders and stuff. It's a combined effort. How often you run in the back truck now? As much as we can. It's in the monthly report. Ten hours a day, a week? It depends on the week. Last few weeks have been pretty heavy with locates and work orders and trying to get things done with the construction, so. Sometimes we get to run it, sometimes we don't.
Six employees, with yourself, Steve.
That includes myself.
Council? Public comment? Kaylee?
Dan Smith? Or Trump?
Yes.
Kay Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
I have nothing against the applicant, but no.
Motion to approve the temporary full-time public utility operator carries. Three in favor, one opposed. Seven point five, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty. Setting the date for a public hearing to vacate, sell, and convey city-owned real estate at three oh six North Davis Street pursuant to section three six four point seven of the Iowa Code.
The overview of this, the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to vacate from June sixteenth was included in the packet. Essentially, we have a offer on that property, and the first step is to determine whether or not the city is even going to vacate that property. So we went through planning and zoning. They did make a recommendation to vacate. They also included some additional information or notes that they wanted the council to consider. I just explained to them that we would talk about those at the public hearing for this. This is merely to set up that public hearing, and any sales or conveyance notes would have to be at the next meeting. So I will have additional information from planning and zoning, but they did recommend to vacate the property.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for July fourteenth at six P M.
I'll second.
Motion by Rich, second by Dan. Council discussion. Public comment? Kaylee?
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Motion to set date of public hearing carries. Seven point six, resolution twenty twenty-five dash forty-one. Setting the date for a public hearing to authorize a capital equipment purchase through a five-year purchase agreement debt pursuant to section three six four point four of the Iowa Code.
This is a similar situation as far as the public hearing. This is merely to set the public hearing. I did include the chief's proposal for the body and car camera purchase, so you can kind of see what what is being requested. And the reason for the public hearing is due to the five-year payment agreement, it would constitute debt, and therefore we have to have a public hearing to approve it. It would be different if we were paying it in one lump sum this fiscal year as a normal capital purchase. Essentially, we are saying, if we approve this proposal next week, we are telling the vendor that we are going to be indebted to them for a five-year period. I understand this total purchase price is only only ninety-three thousand, so in the grand scheme of the capital debt, it's not significant, but it's still a payment plan and requires the same process.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for July fourteenth at six P M.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Kay. Council discussion.
Oh, Jeremiah, with regard to our fiscal year budget for twenty twenty-six, which was already submitted back in March. Does this proposal report with what the budgeted amount was for twenty twenty-six, or is this over budgeted? To that particular fiscal year?
So the chief and I have a meeting set up. We have to discuss it. It's the 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 actual amount will be, what was proposed in the budget, it would technically be over if it was for that fiscal year. Because it's a five-year plan, however, we would only pay eighteen thousand of it or something like that per year. So I think the point of confusion may just have been that if we were going to purchase it outright at ninety-three thousand, it would be, it would end up, all the purchases combined for capital equipment would be over what was specified in the budget. We're doing a five-year plan at the ninety-three thousand and being the total, it would fall less than that amount.
So then does the ninety-three thousand include finance charges, or is the company is just going to let us pay a little at a time?
I believe the ninety-three thousand is the entire fee charge is included.
Was there particular reason why we are getting this information at our second June meeting three months after, four months after budget, when we discussed all this?
I can't identify a specific reason as to why. Essentially, we've been working through that process, trying to identify the capital purchases that need to be made and how to present those. The five-year plan or whatever, I guess, is only specific to, to my knowledge, only specific to this one vendor. So if we opted to go a different route, it would not probably be subject to the same plans, but I can't verify that.
Oh, any other issues that would be re-reviewing previously discussed budget for twenty twenty-six in the department?
Are you referring to just capital type expenses or? So yes, we'll have two additional proposals, two two additional proposals at the next meeting for vehicles and a vehicle and upfitting to that vehicle.
And as I understand, this particular proposal that for the body camera in specific, we're going to lose out on three thousand dollar savings because we won't be able to have this contract for this particular body camera signed or this package signed before June third.
Potentially, yes.
I guess. If we know that we're going to have another adjustment potentially to our budget that we would discuss in February and March, I guess I would like to only have to have that discussion in one meeting instead of two, because it sounds like our first council meeting in July, we're going to be getting a request for additional potential budget adjustments, so. I I guess I would with that in mind, if and when we're going to get that proposal, I wonder why we would not wait to set this, or we wouldn't set this meeting out to allow us to discuss two budget adjustments in one meeting instead of two budget adjustments in two meetings.
I think I'm following you with the, we would not, I I guess, when viewed together, all three of the proposals, we would have a better view, overview, I guess, of the entire capital budget, what is being requested for capital expenditures of the police department at that time. It's, I guess, simpler to explain with all of those numbers together, what what the total is going to be and how it falls within the proposed budget. We could separate them, the one in particular, the body cam, car cameras. We're trying to get as close as we can to that July date. I don't know if they'll honor that that percent discount or not. And then, of course, the vehicle, just trying to move through that as quickly as possible to get that acquired in a decent amount of time. I'm unsure what the lead time is on that now.
I'm just getting a little frustrated with having budget adjustments.
Well, am I correct in my thinking that if we budgeted, did we budget ninety thousand for body cameras? I can't remember.
Yes, I don't have those numbers with me.
It was some somewhere close to that.
Yes.
And what we're actually doing in a sense is instead of spending ninety thousand at that point in time, we're going to spend about eighteen thousand.
Yeah.
So it's a savings to us in the next budget period. And am I looking at that correctly for this item?
For this item, yes. We we had planned on spending ninety thousand dollars this fiscal year or this upcoming fiscal year for the body cam, car cams because of the purchase agreement, but that was, again, presuming it would be for the entire purchase at once. Because of the purchase agreement, we'll be spending slightly more than that, but over a five-year period.
But it's at zero percent interest.
Yes.
If it's a.
It's a, yes, a a payment agreement or purchase.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was following everything on that.
Yes, real, I mean, I guess for that, for all given purposes, had we known this was going to be a purchase agreement versus a one-time agreement, we just would have put eighteen or twenty thousand in for the max purchase instead of ninety.
For the budget for that.
So with this budgeting in the ninety thousand, I'm just using even numbers here. They're going to come back to us on the first of July and ask for additional funding for two other things.
Yes, so.
Up the ninety thousand.
Well, yes, the ninety thousand is what was allocated to the capital equipment budget for the purchase of car and body cameras. Additional items included the vehicle and the upfitting of that vehicle. Those were separate. So we're we're bringing the ninety thousand dollars, but over a five-year period back as part of this purchase agreement. Two additional purchase proposals for vehicle and for upfitting.
But we're still going to be way over the ninety-three thousand that we budgeted, right? So we're going to have to do an amendment to increase the amount of money because we didn't know what we needed to budget for.
We probably will not, as far as budget amendments go, because we are not going to be spending the ninety thousand this fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year. Because the payment plan is going to make it something we're going to have to spend eighteen
Okay.
thousand.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is this. I'm not opposed to having this meeting. What I don't understand is, we start talking about budget submissions for the next fiscal year in November of the year. And we've known that these cameras that we currently have aren't working and weren't supported. And I'm just curious as to why it's taken four months for us as council members to get information on four systems that were already being looked at. We spent hours at budget meetings talking about the budget and how we had to tighten belts. I'm sure this is going to be a cost savings potentially overall. But I find it difficult to believe that it takes four months for for us to figure out that, I mean, if if in fact it's from the vendor that we're getting this information that says, oh, we're going to talk about a five-year contract as opposed to a one-time purchase. Why hasn't taken us four months to get that information? Because it sure would have made budget times and all the meetings we had go a lot easier if we'd have known that, oh, we're only going to have to worry about eighteen thousand dollars over each year for five years, as opposed to trying to cram down, crimp down. We've asked all of our, all of our department heads to shrink their budget as best we can, and now, four months later, we're getting notification that, oh, it's a five-year contract at eighteen thousand instead of one-time purchase of ninety thousand, and it it defies logic to me that we didn't, we couldn't have had that information when we approved the budget and sent it in for certification. That's the point I'm trying. This should not be something that when we start talking about budgets, I'm I'm just putting all the staff on notice that when, from my perspective, in November of this year, from my perspective, in November of this year, you're gonna start to hear me say, I wanna know about what we're gonna be budgeting for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. And when we come in to do our month of meetings in February of next year for the following budget year, I don't want to hear, hear, well, we don't know the information because we haven't solicited it or we haven't tried to track it down. And then I'm gonna sit here in June next year with the same bitch. And I'm sorry, but that's the, if, 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 it is absolutely monumentally frustrating that that this is something that if it's the vendor that's telling us four months after the fact that this is the contract we have, then put it on the vendor. But I'm, we, we take two steps or one step forward and two step back on multiple things. It's just revisiting the same issues. But that's my soapbox for the.
Anything else? Your public comment? You have a motion to set the public hearing by Rich, second by Kay. Kaylee, did you conduct the roll vote, please?
Fire.
Sure.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Motion to approve uh, date for public hearing carries. Seven point seven, discussion of possible action. Free trimming and request to relocate sign with city right of way at one hundred East Third Street.
Um, thank you, Kay. For starters, this is one thousand East First Street, uh, Third Street. I missed a zero in there. Um, this is a bit of a unique situation. Uh, if the council, I tried to conclude pictures for the council to review. We just have a situation with, that involves a few different things here. The original request was just the removal or relocation of a sign. Um, the sign is in the city right of way. Uh, for all intended purposes, I would say the sign is relatively unimportant. It's a metal T-post type sign. Um, it has the American Legion um, uh, sign on it as well as a snow ordinance route or snow uh, route sign on it. In the past, this, the tree on this location has kind of overgrown it. We've had the property owner just trim it down. Did the same procedure this year. Um, and then the property owner is no longer residing at that location, but family is maintaining it. Um, and the family member reached out to one or more elected officials and basically requested that we relocate the sign. Um, again, i- initial thought was that that could be a possibility just as an easy solution. But then the more we got to looking at that location, um, and then as you can see, if you've driven by it or by the pictures, the tree itself is extending far into the city right of way and now is over the road. Um, which is its own issue regardless of the sign. Um, so I guess the purpose of this is twofold. Um, first of all, I mean, if the council is okay with us moving the sign or wants us to direct us to move the sign, we can certainly move the sign or, or remove the sign. Um, but the second issue, I just wanna make sure the council knows is that I'm just worried we're gonna be back to the same discussion here in a few months. Um, cause even if we move the sign, um, that, that tree is out there. Um, a- and just so the council knows as well, I'm not sure if I advise, but the, the property owners or the families, the property owners have um, stated this type of tree is particularly subject to um, dying or uh, if it's not properly trimmed or pruned or pruned at the wrong times or locations. So there is concern about that as well. Um, so, so that's, I guess, just the gist of the issue, wanting to bring that to the council's attention and see if there's any direction one way or the other on the relocation of the sign and then um, I guess notification of the tree trimming that needs to take place in the future.
Is there any indication from the family that they would be upset if the tree was just cut down by the city?
I ju- I did not ask that. I don't think that they would like that, but.
The, the tree does sit on their property. It's the branches that are hanging over to the right way.
Yes.
And I pulled up to that stop sign tonight earlier. And in my vehicle, yes, I could see if oncoming traffic was coming, but I could see if you were sitting in a little higher vehicle, you could have some difficulty seeing if vehicles were coming along Third Street. But once the sidewalk program's done, what's that going to do? We're probably gonna relocate that sign at that point in time anyway, correct?
Good. Wait, I guess that's um, a bit preliminary because I'm not entirely sure where they would run those, but that's entirely possible, yes.
Cause I mean, if they're going to set in a little bit, that sign's going to probably move at that point in time anyway.
Very potential, yes.
But the other issue is the branches that are hanging over, which at this point in time do create a problem, irregardless of the signs there.
They do. But.
Driving here tonight, I believe I counted at least five, if not six of similar signs and say snow removal from just before you, just to the east side of that particular residence up to the stoplight. So I guess as far as the sign itself, I don't know if we have to have, I don't know, Shane or somebody from streets. Are there, are we mandated to have so many signs so many feet apart to show a snow removal route? Cause if we're not, I don't think the sign itself is the important part here. But are there so many, do we have to have so much signage for so many feet?
I'll have to look into that. We just came from a sign conference and uh, they gave like specific stuff, but they didn't go into that, but um, they did bring up the sign at the new Tyson's. That's in their parking lot because that is a private sign? I have to talk to them and tell them they have a new one. But it was in our sign meeting that we just came from in Cedar Rapids. But we just don't stick signs up for sticking signs up.
That's why I'm asking.
So I'm guessing there's a reason for as many as there is, probably because it's public awareness. I mean, if you're not looking, you might catch one, you might not catch any.
Sure, I just, I.
But I can look.
I guess that would be my first question. If they're not, because in that same yard, I believe I think there is a sign to the east of this one that's maybe not in that particular yard, but there's one immediately across the street as you come westbound, that's actually on Scott Street or Bird Street, whatever we're calling it. So I'd be less have less of an issue if we were to remove the sign altogether if we don't have a specific requirement to have so many signs in so many feet. But the issue of the obstruction is I don't know that I think that the whole tree should have to come down, but certainly I think that given where the stop sign is on the cross street where Rich was talking about, that perhaps there's a way to trim the tree from the bottom of so that it's not hanging out so you can't see. About killing the tree.
Three hundred and fifty feet per sign.
Three hundred and fifty feet per sign?
Mm-hmm.
I would bet that we have a sign every, less than a hundred feet coming in. So if that's the case, then I wish we probably would get rid of that particular sign. We still have to address the structures.
Well.
There's three other, two other forms of signage on the post.
Yeah.
Well, there's that. When you say the.
It's American Legion.
American Legion.
But the, the, I guess, one thing to think about is if the tree gets trimmed back, then the sign's not.
The sign is, exactly.
But like you said, it's gonna be moved probably eventually anyway.
Yeah, so if we, if we just leave it there and then move it eventually.
I would pick the suggestion that we move the sign, remove the sign for now and trim that tree this fall when it goes dormant, so we don't kill the tree. And I've noticed there's lots of trees in this town that need trimmed. Not just this one, lots of them.
Right.
Probably less important. Um, maybe that's bad. I probably shouldn't word it that way, but um, just an ad- additional thought, um, I do know we have other service organizations, they've requested to put signage up. Uh, we just approved one a year or two ago. Um, does council have any preference on? I, I guess I don't want that particular service organization to be upset that we're removing their sign. Should we put it someplace else or um, follow up with them?
I would make the suggestion, if, if I am correct, if there's one sort of maybe east of the development that has a space available to move, because the American Legion should be ready. We would put it on that sign in their room or adjust that sign to make when you order it, at least to be protested. Or there's another, I believe, just to the west, there's a sign in the next block that, that that. And I, I think here to there, there's at least four signs between here and one we're talking about. That Legion one could be moved.
Shane, do you know when it was trimmed in previous years?
I do not.
And what top, what part of the year or anything like that?
I don't think they've really trimmed it, except for this year when I asked. Um, Daryl's normally taking care of that. You know what I'm saying? I never had to, never had to ask, but this tree's starting to grow now. And uh, we had a couple complaints and they came directly to me. And so that's why I went to the, the family member I went to and said, just do it at your earliest convenience. I did not know this was going to turn into a firestorm by another family member. They trimmed it back this spring and it grew like vengeance. They had trimmed it back so we could see the sign. Now we can't see the sign because it grew like ven- vengeance again. Um, you know what? Uh, the complainees, um, school start prior to September, but.
All right. Well, now.
Normally we start with a, you'd normally start trimming a tree with an R in the month and you quit eh, early April.
What kind of a tree is it?
Uh, it's a grab apple. Grab apple. I've trimmed mine in the middle of the summer because I'm tired of whacking my head on it. Uh, moaning, but, and it's still live, but I don't really care at the farm either.
Well, my other question is, because if we've already received complaints about it pulling up and si- line of sight, what's the liability that the city may, may have on something like this?
I don't know how many or who all we've received complaints from. I know the school has been one of them that just, uh, I don't believe a formal complaint has been filed, but just made reference to it. So we have the knowledge, um, that it's an issue. As already pointed out, it's certainly not the only one either.
No, there's lots.
Yeah. And I think it depends on, uh, it's exactly what you said, depends on what you're operating. So when I pull up there in my smaller SUV, I don't have any issues. Um, Shane and his guys, when he pulls up there in a dump truck, certainly cannot see, uh, which is probably similar to a school bus. So, um, I would have to check on that to get a complete update.
Cause that to me would be a concern about the liability portion of that.
So does the family not want it trimmed or they don't care if the city trims it?
I do not believe that they, um, I, I certainly don't believe they want the city to trim it. Um, and I guess in the past, the way it's been handled also is the, the procedure is the formal um, notification to the property owner to allow them an opportunity to do that. That's what the code states. And generally speaking, it's um, more care is taken when it's done that way. They, um, it's their own property. I mean, they're certainly trying to do the very best they can to make sure it's looks well and good. Um, we go in there, we attempt to do it with care, but we have uh, different methods of using uh, chainsaws and whatnot. It's certainly not as pristine. It may not be cut the way they like it to. Um, and, and as you can see on this, I mean, the, the right of way setback is um, eleven feet in, so that's a long ways. When we're talking about that tree, that, I mean, that's the majority of the branches is, it's quite a distance back. Not that we have to cut it back eleven feet, but that is technically the right of way and it's supposed to be eight foot above the ground and so.
Fifteen feet above the surface.
Street, fifteen of, yeah, of the street, yeah.
How tall is the sign if anybody that's looking at the pictures?
It's six, seven feet, I guess.
Right. The bottom sign has to be no lower than eight foot.
So, well, I mean, I'm just looking at pictures. And if they're eight foot tall, there is clearly a branch that is blocking the thigh at eight. So it's sure as a little about fifteen feet above the surface of the road. It may be seven and a half feet. I'm certainly not interested in taking a tree down, but I mean, our ordinance says, what our ordinance says. We either need to kind of work with the family to raise the branch that is in question. Or we need to address our ordinance that says that fifteen feet is the, the lowest the branch can hang over the surface of the road. And I don't know how tall the ceilings are in this, but I would imagine our doorways are twelve feet, ten feet. So fifteen feet seems a pretty high amount above. I don't know that that particular tree needs fifteen feet of clearance to be able to see that intersection. But it would certainly seem to me to be reasonable to maybe get that lower level branch. This, it's gonna continue to get taller, so it's gonna continue to get higher.
Well, if I had to guess with the power lines there, that um, a lion probably would not ask. They would just, they would just cut.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't think it's into the power line yet, is it? No.
I don't think so, but I'm just using that as an example and it, it could at some point in time.
Oh, yeah, it will. Oh, don't let.
So was the homeowner willing to work with you, Shane?
Well, I thought the one was. And then, uh, I believe the mayor's been fielding some phone calls from another family member. But the family member I talked to, I talked to him two different times and he, I said, just do it at your earliest conveni- when you could. And then I saw him again and he's like, is this a rush? And I'm like, no. I just wanted you to do it instead of me doing it. And he was good with that.
Can you reach back out to him?
Probably.
Well, and maybe they could come and help when you do it.
Oh, brother.
Be nice, Shane.
That is the other issue. I mean, I'm not.
Just assume they trimmed it for their.
I understand.
It's some, so it's, it must be something to do with their family, why it's there. That's why I reached out to them first.
I believe the mother planted that tree and she's passed away.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I know, I'm not a horticulturist, so I don't, I, I guess. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I know I'm not a horticulturist, so I don't, I guess I can't attest to the, um. Habits of those trees and whatnot. Um, I don't know if there's a better or worse time. I, we can say though, I mean, uh, when they did oblige this and trimmed it back a little bit earlier in the spring, it. It took off. So it did not, didn't, didn't die from that trimming, but it. Came back the other way.
You can call the D N R and ask them about trimming, you should trim the tree.
The concerned parties. Copy of the ordinances that. Would impact it so that they can at least see that it's. The ordinance exists.
We can provide that, um, they are available online. Uh, again, it, what made this, um, matter just a little. Odd is we were speaking with multiple family members, so. In one case, we're talking and there was some indication of compliance and willingness to just. Get to it and the other there was not necessarily, and so we have not directly spoken with anybody, um. But we just wanted to make sure that we addressed it. Uh, completely and didn't. You know, we're not trying to blow anybody off by any means, but.
Well, I really don't think moving the sign. Has any, any bearing on this because.
I agree.
If. You know, if it's a snow, s- snow emergency sign. We got a lot of time on that. And. We're eventually getting probably move it anyway, so I'm good with leaving the sign where it's at for right now. And then we got to deal with, what do we do about the branches?
Along with that, you know, when it comes. Time to put a new snow. Emergency snow out to. Be more. In effect. Uh, the tree, as in most other trees in the community, will not be. Fully leafed branch, so it'll. Be act a lot more visible. That portion of the sign. Like, you know, I can understand the, uh. The visibility as you're trying to look towards the east. When you're coming out to that intersection. Uh, again, you you're talking to the school here, uh. Minus. Early fall and then spring. It's not going to be fully leafed out there again, so I don't, I just wonder how much merit that has. But I'm also not the one in the. Driving the school bus. Well, Shane's pointed out. Family did give me a call, uh. They. Wasn't pleasant. They were, they were not pleased and I can, I can understand. Uh, there's some history behind that tree, so. My initial thought was. Easiest way to correct this problem is to. Move the sign. Move it further away from the corners. We're moving it east, southeast, get it out of the. Growth of the tree. I don't think at that time consideration was given to any crouching out into the right away though. Uh, so that's kind of a, a different factor that has to be looked at. Uh.
Moving the sign up and help the vision.
And. I'll tell you, they're very surprised that it's come to this point. Uh. I won't quote them. Exactly, but. City probably has bigger things to address than this. Or I can understand going that route or bringing that up, but. Uh, it was on the agenda for cops. I think it would be best, whether it's this family or any other family that we work with that property owner. To extend every. Option of possibility for them to. Trim, manicure the trees on their own property versus. The city going even just. Packing it up.
Well.
You're not going to manicure it like. A property owner will.
And I do believe it would be. For the benefit of having them do it as opposed to us. Um. For that sake, but. I think they also need to be aware that. It does need to be trimmed. That I don't think there's any way around that. It's just a matter of when are we going to say is the deadline? For getting that trimming done? And then. Somebody will have to go and inspect it to say that it's satisfactory. Now, if we want to say. After September first, because you said. Month with an R. So if we say after September first, it should be done. Within thirty days?
I think that's reasonable.
So I'll make that motion.
Second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Ritz second by Dan. And for council discussion?
If. If we already know. It's I don't care one way or the other, but if we already know that we're probably going to be moving the sign. Why are we waiting for the sign that goes there down? Now moving the. The. Other plaque to a different sign. I'm not sure I understand the rationale behind it. We already know that we're going to be moving it in some. That, that would.
The sidewalk should go in behind the sun. To keep it in the right away.
Understood, but. Where the sign is now. I mean, I guess the type of the discussion has been with the sign. Is probably going to have to be moved again. At some.
Just through the work.
Those signs will be. Interfering with the work, so they're going to take a long.
Right. It doesn't matter to me.
Aren't they narrowing? That street in, in that area too?
They're going to have a turn lane. It's not really narrowing it.
Street width will remain the same.
The street stays the same. You just get a turn lane now. Is all they're doing.
But new curve. No, they're, they're doing more than that.
They're, they're putting a turn lane in. I. I don't believe that the width of the road is changing, but.
They'll probably redo the curbing on that.
Well, then. No, I know that this is separate, but at some point we need to see. Schematics and. Distances on that street. Because I don't know that I've seen a final. Schematic of that street yet.
But I will draw my comment about the sign. In week, the motion didn't include anything about the sign, but. So I don't want to muddy the water on the motion, so.
Very public comment? Bailey, would you conduct the roll vote, please?
Okay, Smith?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Fansman?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Motion to approve, here is. Seven point eight review and approve waiver of plat review for Cass Hills parcel within two miles of city limits.
Um, I don't think there's anything significant to note on this, um. I, I felt forgot, uh, to include it on here, uh, but the city ordinance does require, uh, if anything that constitutes a subdivision. For animosis ordinance outside of the city limits, but within that two miles. Uh, planning and zoning and the council needs to hear that. Uh, it did go to planning and zoning. They made recommendation to waive the plat. Um. Um, this is just the official, uh, city. Council approval of that. If the council's good with that, I will sign this waiver and get it off so they can continue. Um. Uh, there wasn't anything significant to note, I guess, on this. There is some other subdivisions out in that area. Uh, we waived those in the past, so. Um, I don't believe there's anything on this.
This would have. Gone before and as we know, hasn't been approved by the county.
It is, it, it is going through that approval process currently, I believe. I, I'm, again, I'm not entirely sure how that process works, but they are looking for. Uh, councils, um. Uh, waiver of that two mile limit before they continue. Yeah.
I'll move to approve the waiver of plat review for Cass Hill. parcel within two miles of the city limit.
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by Ridge. Uh, council discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Trump?
Yes.
Batesman?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Fansman?
Yes.
Uh, motion to approve waiver of what carries? Seven point nine review and approve. Purchase request in the amount of eighty-three thousand eight hundred dollars for Watson and Park Playground. Equipment as allocated in fiscal year twenty-five budget. Kale Yoder.
Uh, just one correction Kale brought up to me. I copied and pasted some of the pay, uh, texts for these two agenda items. So this one should be fiscal twenty-six. As allocated in the fiscal twenty-six budget.
Kale Yoder, Parks and Rec Director. So just to preface this a little bit, about a year ago, we put out a survey on Facebook to all the residents. Just asking, getting some community input, seeing what people wanted to see improved, seeing what things different in town they would have liked. Besides from the Aqua Court renovations, this was a clear number one was just playground space areas in general. So as a park board, we've kind of been working on this the past couple of months. A little bit later down the line, we put another survey out just based off of playgrounds, seeing what the community would like to see in that. So we took the aspects from that survey and we put it all together and sent out a scope of work to several different vendors. They came back to us with a bunch of different options. We presented those to the park board and we kind of picked and chose our favorite aspects of all of those different designs. From there, we took that scope and sent it back out to all these different vendors and this is what we ended up with, was the picture that you guys have in front of you. This was the best quality and price out of what we received from those five.
This is definitely where the current sand volleyball ball sits on.
Yep, that's correct.
So the. Bring. On the other side.
Yes.
Put up is that's, that's not changed matter.
Not at the moment. If anything, that will be removed along with some of the other standstill playground equipment. It's getting to a point where it's just not safe anymore.
So I assume nobody's using the sand volleyball courts anymore?
I have seen one person use it in my whole banner here.
Person? That's kind of tough.
I'll move to purchase request.
Second.
Motion by Todd, second by K. Council discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Fansman?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Batesman?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Motion to approve purchase request carries. Seven point ten review and approve. Purchase request in the amount of six thousand two hundred nineteen dollars eighty-seven cents. For replacement lifeguard chairs is allocated in fiscal year. Twenty-five budget. Uh, should I be twenty-six budget?
That one is correct. This one is great.
Yeah, that's correct. This one is. Twenty, twenty-five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ridge, second by Todd. Also discussion. Public comment? Bailey?
Fansman?
Yes.
Wymer?
Yes.
Fansman?
Yes. Yes.
Motion for purchase request carries. Seven point eleven review and approve consent agenda. Pay request totaling sixty-two thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars twenty-five cents. There are five items listed. I'll read all five off. Council can make a motion that includes consent. Which will bring all five off for discussion and. Uh, one. Uh, both. Item A from EC cog in the amount of two, one thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars. For the downtown facade improvement project. Item B from H R Green in the amount of thirty-four thousand. Six hundred seventy-four dollars forty-seven cents. For the Ford and Huber Alley sewer project. Item C from H R Green in the amount of three thousand dollars. For the water treatment plant aerator replacement project. Item D from Martin Garner in the amount of seven thousand two hundred dollars. For the downtown facade revitalization project. Item E from Shaper Plumbing in the amount of sixteen thousand. Six hundred eighteen dollars seventy-eight cents. For the water treatment plant disinfection improvement project.
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by K. Also, uh. All five are up for discussion.
So Steve, with the aerator equipment up to the water plant, will this be the final build from green?
Um, I do not know because I don't, I. I don't know how much they've. Built this for yet.
How much was that equipment? Do you remember? It was just equipment replacement, correct?
Yes, but it had to be reengineered and changed. To accommodate because they don't like an identical piece. Uh, H R Green was twenty-six five for their engineering. I think it was. Two and a quarter was the price of the equipment. I thought it was in the. In the scope, but I don't see it.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions on this? Public comment? Bailey?
Wymer?
Yes.
Fansman?
Yes.
Trump?
Yes.
Batesman?
Yes.
Sent motion carries. Eight point zero, city administrators report.
I have nothing this evening.
Also, have any questions or directions for? Jeremiah?
Uh, I do have a question. Do we need to rewrite our fireworks ordinance?
Um, we probably should. There's, um. Municipalities across the state are kind of considering how and what to word, um. Many of them are just going with, uh, essentially like we did with U T V and A T V laws saying. Ditto to the state. So we prob- we probably should. Either way. Uh, it should be known that, uh, for this year anyways, our current ordinances will not be enforceable the way they're written.
At least on three days of the year.
Yes, correct.
Well, we. We do have authority to enforce. Uh, the new state regulations.
Yes, which would be the same as our, uh, current ones as far as, um. For, for those other days out of the year, um, they're not allowed to, to do them.
They're enforceable for three sixty-two and. We've got three days that we can enforce it, right?
If this falls within the time windows.
So within the, yes, within the time.
Time of day would go.
Right, yeah.
Anything else, Jeremiah? Nine point zero mayor council reports, nine point one mayor's report, I have nothing. Nine point two council reports. Ten point zero public comments for items not on the agenda. Eleven point zero adjournment. See you in the meeting adjournment. Thank you, everyone.